Welcome to tonight's council meeting, Monday, January 2nd, 2018. In consideration of those around you, please turn off your cellphones and other electronic devices. Katie Jenkins will give the invocation and we'll go into the questions.
Almighty God, you have sent before us the responsibilities of the city. We ask of your guidance and direction that we, the members of council, may do what is best for the people that live here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we'll have our swearing in of the council people that were elected in November 2017. Number one will be Tom Fitzgerald being sworn in by Judge Tim Cannon.
I am Tom Fitzgerald.
I am Tom Fitzgerald.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the constitution of the United States.
that I will support the constitution of the United States.
the constitution of the state of Ohio.
the constitution of the state of Ohio.
the charter and ordinances of the city of Paintsville, Ohio.
the charter and ordinances of the city of Paintsville, Ohio.
and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office as an at-large councilwoman of the city of Paintsville, Ohio during my continuance in said office.
so help me God.
during my continuance in said office.
so help me God.
Lauren Denallo will be sworn in by Judge Karen Lawson.
I, Lauren Denallo, solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of Ohio, the charter and ordinances of the city of Paintsville, Ohio, and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office as an at-large councilwoman of the city of Paintsville, Ohio during my continuance in said office.
so help me God.
So help me God. Lauren Denallo will be sworn in by Judge Karen Lawson.
I, Lauren Denallo, solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of Ohio, the charter and ordinances of the city of Paintsville, Ohio, and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office as an at-large councilwoman of the city of Paintsville, Ohio during my continuance in said office.
so help me God.
So help me God. Further more, it will be Jim Foder being sworn in by Joe Groom.
With you, is that? Raise your hand now, please, and repeat after me. I, Jim Foder.
I, Jim Foder.
solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
that I will support the constitution of the United States.
the constitution of the state of Ohio.
the constitution of the state of Ohio.
the charter and the ordinances of the city of Paintsville, Ohio.
the charter and the ordinance of the city of Paintsville, Ohio.
and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office as an at-large councilwoman of the city of Paintsville, Ohio during my continuance in said office.
so help me God.
so help me God.
At this moment, can I get a motion to accept the regular minutes from the meeting at 12:18:17?
so.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
aye.
Passes. Visitor recognition, at this time we'll recognize visitors. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak. When called upon, please use the podium. Clearly state your name and address into the microphone and limit your comments to three minutes. Any dialogue must be conducted through me as president of council, although your comments or questions can be addressed to the council, administration, or both. Mr. Foder, you want to speak?
Thank you for that.
At this point, we're going to move into legislation. If you wish to comment on legislation, you must request to do so at this time. Those making such a request will then be called upon after the reading. Any dialogue must be conducted through me as president of council, although your comments or questions can be addressed to the council, administration, or both. When called upon, please use the podium. Remember, clearly state your name and address into the microphone and limit your comments to three minutes.
ordinance number two. Ordinance number three. Ordinance number four.
Okay. Ordinance number two, third reading.
This is ordinance enacting chapter 1121, codified ordinances of the city of Paintsville declaring an emergency.
Welcome.
It's been a while since we've been talking.
It was just last year. Quickly, go.
Okay. So this legislation accompanies the stormwater management utility legislation. These regulations were enacted in 2011 to incorporate the stormwater management controls and changes to chapter 1121 are based on collaborative efforts issued by River Water Partnership and the Lake County Soil and Water Conservation District. The language has been reviewed for phase two compliance by Ohio EPA. This ordinance includes a change to Ohio EPA's erosion incentive control requirements. And since the changes are significant, an entirely new chapter is being proposed for adoption.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mrs. Shute? I think this is a great ordinance, and if... Can I get a motion?
so help me God.
Second.
Mrs. Shute?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Denallo?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Foder?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes. Ordinance number two, pass. Ordinance number three, third reading.
An ordinance enacting chapter 941, stormwater utility and stormwater management of the 1998 codified ordinances of the city of Paintsville and declaring an emergency.
This is basically the same as the 1121 chapters. It also was developed by the Lake County Soil and Water Conservation District, issued by River Watership Partners, and is in compliance with phase two for Ohio EPA. And again, since there are so many changes, a new chapter is being proposed for adoption.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Shute?
Does any of this put an extra financial burden on the city?
No, it puts an extra financial burden on developers.
I'm sorry, can somebody come over?
I wanted to just mention that I appreciated the collaborative efforts of all the separate agencies on this, and I feel also very dear about this.
Oh, we couldn't hear. She said she had... Can you repeat?
Yeah. I mentioned that I appreciated the collaborative effort that was done on this with the different agencies, involvement as well as the hardware that's put into it by our city engineer.
We concur.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Denallo?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Foder?
Yes.
Mrs. Shute?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes. Ordinance number three, pass. Ordinance number four, third reading.
An ordinance enacting chapter 1140, riparian setbacks of the 1998 codified ordinances of the city of Paintsville and declaring an emergency.
So this legislation increases an entirely new chapter within subdivision regulations of our ordinances. The intent of the regulations are to protect and enhance the functions of riparian areas that provide reasonable controlled governing buildings and use them in a manner to minimize approachment at pipelines and watercourses. We also, as part of our zero-interest role through EPA for our water intake, this was a piece of legislation that they wanted to see us enact as part of that agreement.
Any questions or comments? Any motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mrs. Denallo?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Foder?
Yes.
Mrs. Shute?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes. Ordinance number four, pass. Tonight we have a presentation from the AMI. This is the iron.
Yeah, as Jeff walks up here, during the budget cycle, we had a couple conversations about AMI, but I told council that we'd be spending a lot of time doing several presentations, having lots of opportunities to talk about this. So this is just continuing the conversation, the next step. We're talking about why Paintsville would be interested in AMI, and then you'll see at the end, we already invited AMP back in February to talk about the AMP project. So we're taking steps to educate everyone on this, what AMI is, and then we'll bring AMP back in February.
I can't believe it's not... I can't find it for the... I can go upstairs and maybe...
It's pretty straightforward. I remember it was last year.
You guys have hard copies. We'll make sure we get the presentation on the website so that everyone else in the public can see it. If there are anyone in the audience who wants a copy, I have an extra copy.
Do you want one?
I can go over to the...
Nick, I can share. Make my house more fun.
Yeah. Do it. Do you like one?
Have you got one?
Sorry.
All right, Jeff, it's your show. Go for it. I gave my copy away, so it's only you.
Good teacher. Good teacher. I don't know what I was thinking. Nick said he would share with you.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay. So here we are. Good evening, everybody. Here to talk about AMI. We last talked about it November 6th when we had the AMP representatives came up. And should the city decide to move forward, we'll fully evaluate all our options, do our due diligence on this project. As AMP member, we have this option of subscribing to the programs that we determine are of interest to the city. And we've already had questions and comments and hopefully started the conversation as we determined where we want to go with this project. Tonight, we're just direct to continue the dialogue about it. What we'd like to do first is review the current situation, and that, excuse the pun, when we like our current...
Yes.
All right, anyway. Currently, we've been...
You don't tell me how to explain your jokes.
I'm working here. Currently, the electric and water meters are manually read and billed residents and businesses monthly for their service. The feedback that we've been receiving is both residential and business customers are looking for more timely access to their energy usage. In inclement weather, especially the water meters when they're in the pits, they're hard to get to, so we end up having to estimate those. Customers who suspect the meters have been misread or have high bill complaint, it's really available to get more information. On that, we have to go out and do a check on the meter connections and check the reading. And then customers moving in and out require service connection or disconnection, which involves us going back out again. Current manual meter reading process, meters are read by the utility department personnel using their handheld meter readers or the HHMR equipment. Each one of the billing systems send the file to the handhelds, and they can go out on specific routes. Meters are then read manually throughout the month. Data is entered into the handheld devices via keyboard that's on it. The meters are equipped, some meters are equipped with a touch reader allowing that unit to collect the reading directly. And after that, all the meters, after all the meters are read, the devices are brought back, returned to the office, and readings are uploaded into the billing system. The process is, use the word antiquated, and it's hard to believe that a handheld reader is antiquated, but they are, they're moving out. I mean, it's a little bit better than the old style where you bring a book out and use a pencil, but it is an older system. But meters and HHMR equipment is outdated results in delays from when the meter's read to when the bill is sent to the customer. Next page is the current status and pictures there between the meter reader, handhelds in the charter, and the billing system server. Of that, the current, the manual meter, you have a manual reading process for aging meters with handheld equipment. They lack support for new pricing options that are out there with different kinds of software to give people more information, and there's no smart grid platform, and it does meet customer expectations. Next up is the, so what is advanced metering? This is where we take out the analog meters and replace them with the digital meters, and then the digital meters, rather than relying on a meter reader to collect usage information, digital meters record information every 15 minutes, send that information back to the utility several times per day. Digital meters are enable customers to monitor their consumption more precisely so they can make more informed energy choices. Advanced meters report power outages back to the utility, enabling enhanced service restoration. And electric meters can be equipped to remotely switch electricity service on or off with basically the touch and mouse click, a mouse click. And we also included a website, www.whatismartgrid.org, has some more information about that on the meter. The advanced metering infrastructure, or AMI, which is the project we're looking at, includes the electric meters, the water meter, communication modules, communications network, software applications, all grouped together, or what we are referring to as AMI. If the city moves forward with AMI, we will then have a network in place that communicates with the electric and water meters. And as the city considers other improvements, like LED street lighting, electric distribution system monitoring enhancements, or automated distribution, the communications network will be important. It will be the backbone of that system to advance some other improvements in the system. The city plans to take this, leverage its investment in AMI communications for other future needs, and there are a couple other things out to look forward to doing. The next page, Paintsville's applications. It lists outage management, distribution automation, billing system, customer portal, street lighting controls, other future city applications. Kind of gives you a picture of a cloud, boost the communication network, and then has the four different applications. Looking at the slide, the best way I could put it is if you have a pen, you start on the left with outage communicate, outage management, and put the number three, four, one, two, five, six under each box. Then you'll see that the middle two, one and two, are probably the immediate improvement, the immediate something that we would look forward to doing with the AMI project, the billing system and the customer portal. Outage management, distribution automation would be three and four, they would follow that. And the last two, street lighting controls and the other future city applications like he's putting down there, the Internet of Things, IoT, would probably be the last six. So for that page, it's three, four, one, two, five, six. Check your cards. All right. Trying to keep it rolling a little bit. Here we go. Okay. Why do you so mind the AMI? It's, we were hoping to improve service to the customers, improve financial benefits to the city, and improve utility operations. Under that, customer service improvements, we would reduce calls to the utility office about estimated or indirect bills. Billing complaints and questions can be resolved without sending people, field personnel to reread the meters. The utility office will be able to connect to that meter and read it right there in the office. Meter failures will identify more quickly because the meter is smart enough that it will communicate back to us that it's malfunctioning or has not correct voltage. Remote connection and disconnection of electric meters to support customer requests to move in or move out of rentals. It's like at the utility office, a quick mouse click, and the power is on. Usage information via the customer portal, this means the customers will get more information about their usage, their history, what, when they're using, and allows us to even look into other, like time of use rates, which is another advancement in the system. The next page is kind of a picture then that we would be able to provide the customer where their usage is shown, kind of they can get an idea of temperature affects the usage, and this is just really a lot, a lot of information available. When you think about each meter is reporting back status, load, voltage, every 15 minutes. We have 12,000 meters, so you're getting 12,000 or more bits of information every 15 minutes. That's a lot, a lot of information that can be used in a variety of ways by the customer, by the businesses, and by us, by the system itself. Next page also is another little feature that they have with the, there's a phone app that people can use where if you're on the budget. And this is a budget alert from Paintsville Utilities. You've used 50% of your budget, there are 18 days left in your cycle. This slide reminded me of when I first got a cell phone and the kids had to run the data plan, and you know, you use up all your data, you have 30 more days in your billing cycle, you might want to add some. So I mean, it's, I make light of it, but it's also another use for the customer to be more involved with their electric usage and billing. They'll know how much they have, and they'll know how much on their budget they've already used. And again, it's us reaching out and trying to work with the customer to get a better system put in. Okay. Positive financial benefits to the city. Improved cash flow and reduced time for meter reading to billing, more timely disconnection in service. Voltage monitoring allows reduction of distribution voltage, less loss, lower power supply costs. Reduced workload in these areas allows reallocation of labor to higher priority work. Field investigations of billing issues, reduce labor costs from connecting and disconnecting meters. Labor spent reading meters can be re-allocated to higher value of tasks within the utility. Improved utility operations, improved outage restoration, driven by meters communicating their outage service. This, from my point of view, is going to be a really cool feature once we get it up and running, where we get a call and we may even be ahead of the call. The meter will be quick enough that it will send out that I've just lost power, and we'll have an area or a street, we'll be able to, before the people even call. So that we're already sending crews out. So I mean, the reliability there is awesome. It's something I'm looking forward to. It's a big part for me. Not so much the utility billing, I think, distribution. So suspected distribution transformers can be monitored for overloading. This is also true, what we find a lot is in the older parts of town where we came in, where a 25 KVA used to be able to serve 20 some houses when they had 60 amp services. And now people have come in, they've redone the house, they upgraded their service, they added central air, they've added a bunch of other things to the house, which is fine, but they don't usually take the time to tell us. So the neighborhoods that have 20 houses on a 25 KVA are popping fuse all the time. And then this system will allow us to get ahead of that. It will start saying, transformers are overloaded, or there's more loading in the neighborhood, and then we can look into that, too. Another really cool thing from the distribution side. Focus tree trimming for meters reported momentary outages. That's just again, how the meters are, be quick enough to report. We had a drop and holders run them back, drop and holders run them back, and you can go out there, and there's the pine tree going. So it's, again, every 15 minutes, 12,000 meters, we're going to get a lot of data, and you can do a lot of stuff within the system or about that. And then again, the meters are going to come to us enabled for time of use rates if we wanted to get into that, if we wanted to get into net metering or demand side management. And then again, the next page is a, is a picture of the billing history where you can see on different days and times what the people were using. Again, it's just more information for the customer. Okay, the next page, there was some, we have some discussion, I believe Lori brought up the health concerns. We looked into it and went with the people from AMP looked at, and they found, again, the website, whatismartgrid.org, has more of this information. But the biggest thing is they've had over 25,000 articles published on the topic for the last 30 years, and at this point is now more extensive than most chemicals and exposures. The next page will give you some idea of what they were talking about last time, and here they mentioned, you can see that the exposure levels for a cell phone by your ear, and then the smart ear, the two blue things down in the blue bars are showing a 40 and a 4, depending on closeness, and your cell phone at your ear has a 5,000 exposure rating. So I mean, what they're finding is no adverse health effects at this point from low level rate RF energy from the meters, the meters put out, so much just a small signal every 15 minutes. So the exposure is much, much lower than stuff you would normally find in your house. And they showed a little bit of that. There's more on that, on that website, whatismartgrid.org. And then finally, where are we at now? The next steps would be, we have a council workshop, work session planned for February 12th. The AMP reps will be back up to talk about how they went about figuring out their program, where, who they looked at, why they looked at them, review the market, selection of vendors, savings for the city by leveraging a centralized data system. And this again comes back to the thinking about 12,000 meters in the city of Paintsville, sending information every 15 minutes. A lot, a lot of information where this is going to help out a centralized data system, skilled administrative resources, the benefits of collaborative collaboration with other AMP members in the program, and also what we would like to be, this is all from AMP coming up for work session February 12th. We also have some homework on our part to do, looking into other options, do our due diligence, and be able to show to you that the system we have now costs us this much, will cost us much in the future, and where does the AMP program fill in so that there is a savings for us?
Yes, Katie?
So obviously, this is already happening, and this is for sure happening down in Columbus, so state legislation allows this to take back to be within the state. Is there any reason we would need to have any kind of county oversight for this, or is this strictly going to be legislation we can pass at local level and have it be appropriated?
There will be no need to bring the county into it. It's completely, it's city council decision.
Okay.
So first, I want to thank you for going through the trouble of addressing my concerns about the health hazards. I appreciate that information very, very much. One of my questions is, I know you said our other equipment, the equipment used now is antiquated. I'm wondering, is any of that, you think, is any marketable for resale or anything like that, or is it all stuff that's just going into the garbage?
We could look at, because there's others, smaller systems that they, that are still doing, you know, the book and pencil, that we could maybe look at doing that. But the trouble is, the system we have is not upgradable, so it would be somebody that would, I would say, a smaller system that would maybe want to look at. would, I would say, a smaller system that would maybe want to look into. And we could reach out to people within the footprint of the state.
And also, can I ask?
It would probably be someone who would want to buy it for parts and pieces, so they could, you know, keep their system running. But we would definitely find out there and see if they would be interested in it.
And then, on the other side of that, what would our disposal of all that equipment cost be? Where would we get rid of that? How old that cost is?
I mean, we've been thinking too, an appropriate label, disposable, like we do computers and other electronics, so I don't know the number off the top of my head, what that would be.
And then the other, can I ask another question? Well, I'm also wondering, as far as the margin of error for like, for people who are placed in Columbus that already have a system, I think that's what Ms. Jenkins alluded to, what is the marginal error for clicking off the wrong customer at the wrong time? You know, like, one of the things we want to do is reduce customer calls to us. So I imagine there would be some kind of calls like that, especially if you can do it so quickly and so easily. And I wonder if there is a margin of error in that that we're aware of, or can we come aware of?
I think what we would do is, once it came in, we would have the utility office personnel, we'd be sure that, we would go through that in training and a work session and say, I'm sure there would be public set process. Do you want them off? Yes.
I just can imagine that this is an incredible amount of information that you guys are getting very quickly. And so how do we decipher all that information and make sure that we're not making mistakes on our end in managing the information? You know what I'm saying? And I was just wondering, if other cities have already tweaked their systems and found out what to do to prevent that, it would be nice to know ahead of time.
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's part of the, part of our diligence on our part to know how our system is all going to work and how it will function.
Ms. Chu.
Yeah, a couple of, I've got one, two, I have a four. Want to go back off of what Lori said, you know, every 15 minutes, every 15 minutes, that is like really overwhelming. I mean, I can picture that person sitting there in front of that computer, just almost going crazy every 15 minutes. Why is it, can that be lengthened? If we find out that that's like way too fast and too much, and we're not really being able to do anything with it?
Right. Probably a better way to look at it is, the meters communicate every 15 minutes to a collector. And then the collector, we'll use software, so you're not actually seeing it, seeing it every 15 minutes, it's coming into the collector, the collector, the different software algorithms will take that data, and then it smooths it all out so that it's, it will refresh, but you're not seeing it constantly changing.
So if there's no change, it's just going to continue. How long a minute you get a change with whatever 15 minute increment, that's when the bell's going to go off.
Right. It gets much smoother than looking at something that's flashing the children.
And I noticed that in the presentation, you talked about the digital meters. Initially in our discussion, it was electric only. In the presentation, it's now water electric.
Well, it will be electric initially, eventually it will be water. And then a conversation, it would probably be two or three years on loan for water. But the initial infrastructure would be for bulbs, would be inside, we would be moving in that direction.
And there aren't any digital meters in the city today? They're all, you know, they're all not this, right?
No, that's not true. There's, there's more analog than not, than not, but we, you don't get them anymore, so we've been buying.
So those meters might have changed.
Not as smart, but we've been.
But it's still going to be changed, that will become smart?
Right. Because we were looking into, depending on the meters that we get with the system, some of the meters we have can be programmed, but not all of them. There's some of the residential ones are just basic residential digital meters.
So to piggyback off of that, most of our water meters will be able to just get an adapter put on them, and they'll be able to be read by the system.
They'll be smarter.
So there are already smarter than our electric meters. But we still have to, you know, get the entire process staggered out. It's always easier to do the electric meters first.
And so who has this now? What cities have this now?
One city I know, Effra, Pennsylvania, is implementing it, and there's a number of people in the pipeline, a number of different communities, I'm not sure all of them, and we're contemplating ending the pipeline, that's where we're at. Effra is actually, has the meters up and running.
And then the last question that I have is, we all got the email that says there's going to be a lot of discussion here, and we're going to have a lot of yard signs and so on and so forth. Is there any statements that can be publicly made at this point to address that, those emails that the email has gotten?
Well, what we can say is that, first of all, the city council's not decided to move forward with this. We are just deciding to talk about it. There's a lot to talk about. Although we continue to bring AMP to the council to discuss using the AMP project, we are also looking at other opportunities. But it is on us to prove which opportunity is the best for the city. And so we are working on that. And all we can do is keep looking at the data and figuring out what's best for the community. And the, some of the concerns of a certain individual, he's more than able to come here and talk to us about those concerns.
And this is not a similar deal to the, his concerns are, the citizens' concerns are coming from the old, you know, we have a 15-year deal with this power and so on and so forth. And this is not along the same lines of that contract? It's a, how long is this contract for?
It's a 10-year, I believe is what AMP proposed, was a 10-year. Yeah, power purchase agreements are on a completely different level than what this agreement will be on, but.
It's a different kind of project.
A lot of the other concerns of our, as far as software upgrades or system upgrades or anything of that sort, is built into the contract. We looked at all of those details. When Jeff sat on the task force years ago to help AMP build this project, the first thing they did is went out to all the communities where this had failed, to figure out where all the weaknesses were in those failures. And we helped build this system to make sure those failures no longer occur. So although there aren't a lot on this particular program, over 50% of all electric users nationwide are on an AMI system. So this isn't a new system to the electric industry, it's just a new system to municipal electric systems.
And I'm glad to get that information out, because I think I heard in the presentation today that this system is like over 30 years old. These systems are, I think, the worst.
I don't know. I would guess so, because the research has been going for over 30 years, right?
There's been, yes, let me say this, there's been smart metering programs for over 30 years. I mean, we're not, this is new, this is something.
Right. I'd love to hear that.
It's something that's matured, but it's, it's been out.
It is definitely new to Painsville, but it's not new to the electric industry.
Correct. And I would just like to make sure that we kind of emphasize that point, because I think people, you know, same thing, if you always buy a Buick, and you know that Buick's our good product, you know what I'm saying? I think that's a good thing to hear.
Ms. Jenkins.
Just two things. In response to Christine Chu's question about other communities, American Electric Power Company, which does power for a large majority of southern Ohio, they're a company, earlier this year, they took on over 900,000 customers to this, so that's, you might kind of, I've read a couple of articles about it, their process. And then also, I wanted to ask, and I don't know if we're this far in the process, but in this, in this consideration, is there also discussion about allowing individuals to opt out of receiving this technology?
And that is a discussion that's completely up to council. If you want to have an opt-out option, I would just suggest that we put some kind of writer on that to help cover costs for meter readers. It's easier to put it on in the beginning. If you don't put a writer on, and then we get rid of our meter readers, and we have to hire someone who does the meter reading, it's hard to initiate that later.
Well, I think I read communities charge anywhere from $20 to $40 a month if you choose to opt out.
Sometimes 50, yeah. Yep.
You know, the other thing here is, in terms of opting out, I believe our gas company has gone to readers. I don't ever remember them asking us if we wanted to opt out. So I'm not sure going along that line would be something we'd want to do, but that's just me off the top of my head.
And we'll keep that in the presentation at the forefront, that council needs to have that discussion so that we can get their direction on that. So we'll make sure that's in the conversation.
Thank you.
Ms. Chu.
Going back to the disposal of the equipment, is there no scrap value for any of this?
Do you cancel meters?
Well, no, I mean, obviously you're going to do the meters off the house, there's going to be a lot of stuff that's going to pile up somewhere. So is there any scrap value to the stuff that's piled up as we move to the new meters and so on?
We've tried, we've looked at a couple different, because sometimes when people upgrade their service, we have to take the meter, and there is some companies that do take them. There is, I don't want to say there is, I don't know that it's a lot, but there is some scrap value to the old equipment.
Especially because there's going to be 12,000 of it.
True.
Well, those are all the types of things we look at any time we upgrade the equipment, is what's the best way to dispose it, whether it's worth it or not, health concerns, environmental concerns, all of that. We usually leave that up to Andy, and then he tells us what he thinks.
Nick.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I think this sounds very interesting, and I'm very interested in like the customer service improvements, or is there, do you know how much time or how much labor is spent reading and monitoring like the current systems, and kind of what would be the difference going from the labor spend towards this system, towards the, and then after the?
Well, I know they have three routes, they divided the whole system up into three different routes, and so a third, and a third, and a third, and it takes about a month to get the whole system where with the new system, they'll be able to, on a 15-minute increment, get all the reads.
How many people take care of that monthly?
I mean, I think there's three full-time and three part-time readers, right back, something like that, to get the whole system covered in that time, in a month it takes to get the whole system.
Versus 15 minutes.
And now we'll be able to get it. In fact, the utility office, if somebody comes in, then we always say, I think my meter is not reading right. That's the beauty of the two, you can instantly look, see what the meter's doing right, and then get the history. Like I said, you have all this information to back it up, and you can do it like right at the desk, and you won't have to send people out. It's, it'll be really cool.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. I was just curious, what type of network has to be set up to, to run these meters? You talk about an RF frequency network.
Yeah, each meter will have a transmitter within it, and then they, on the interval, they send out a signal with all the data, and then what will happen is, they'll come in, and they will have a network installed upon a poles, that have collectors that are similar, it'll be radio frequency, but if you think of like a cell tower, they'll go to those towers, the towers then go to another tower, and works its way back to a collector here, and then all come back.
Are there any instances of this whole system being hacked? You know, and?
I think that's why some of the AMP IT people, is why we turn to them, they have a security, a cybersecurity level, so you can't get in the system. Or you're protected as much as you can be given cybersecurity threats.
And does this new meter, does it use more electricity than the old one?
It depends on if the house uses more electricity.
Any other questions?
No, I just want to say, so electrifying presentation, and it's really good to see employees charged with their enthusiasm about the project.
We're shocking, though.
Thank you, Jeff.
You've listed, we've done administrative report, law director. Steve Andrew.
Correspondence, clerk of council. The next regular council meeting will be held Tuesday, January 19th, 2018, at 7:30. There will be an organizational meeting this Thursday, January 4th, in Court Room One, at 5:15. The Painsville Recreation Chili Cookoff is January 27th, from 1:00 to 3:00, at First Church Congressional. The Danny Daughter Social is February 10th, at noon, at Morse Avenue Community Center.
Thank you. Closing comments. Ms. Chu.
Just want to wish everybody a happy new year, and thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Mr. Cur, I mean, I'm sorry, Nick Augustine.
Again, a happy new year, and then also real best, this Saturday is the Downtown Painville Organization's Founder's Day Breakfast. We're having, I forgot my flyer, so me coffee coming in as the Buffalo Soldier, and it's going to be, supposed to be a very good presentation, so.
And where's that at?
I forgot my flyer.
Lake Erie College.
Lake Erie College, okay. I was just setting up a little bit, yeah. It's like at 8:00 or 8:30, let things get underway. And you said snow's pretty good.
Mr. Cur.
Not at this moment in time, I guess, just again, thank the residents of Painsville for giving me an opportunity to serve and help try to improve the quality of life of the people of the city.
Thank you. Ms. DeMell.
Thank you. I, I too would like to share what an honor it is to be reelected in a state that I'm looking forward to serving in for the next four years. Thank you again to Judge Karen Longton, as well as Judge Tim Cannon, for taking time with me tonight to swear a sin. And again, thank you for the presentation, as I look forward to future conversations regarding it. And also, just want to thank the city for doing so much for cleaning up the snow, and doing their best, I really appreciate their efforts, so.
Ms. Jenkins.
Happy new year. I want to say thank you to the road department. I know over the last two weeks, we've gotten a lot thrown at us, and typically, one call to City Hall, and within two hours, whatever the complaint has been, has been resolved. So I really appreciate that. And then also, congratulations to the new old members of council, or the old new members of council, and, but it's good to see you guys back again at the table with us.
So sincerely, meaning this is a.
I'd like to say happy new year to everyone. Also thank Tim Cannon for swearing in today, and also, I'm also honored to be reelected to council, and congratulate the other council members for being reelected, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Okay, I was, I requested our city manager to come up with a statement about the plumbing. I know it was a difficult week, and I had a few calls, and you know, as Katie said, as soon as I was able to get ahold of that resident, the city responded as quickly as I can, and this is mine.
I'm reading it from the email, because it sounds a little odd, because I'm reading it from the email. "In order to be resourceful, we focus on main arterial roads first, then move to secondary side streets and end with the cul-de-sacs. The goal is to make the roads safe and passable. During the day shift, we pull workers from other departments to help pump. We have been somewhat conservative with salt due to the limited amount we order each year, the low temperatures, and we don't want to put salt down only to power it up. While the roads are not down to pavement, the mains and secondary streets are passable. This particular storm, snow event, started on December 23rd and was a heavy extended snow event. During heavy extended snow events, the departments focus on keeping the main arterials, hills, bridges, and curbs travel." Interesting word. "As this storm persisted, crews teamed up and attempted to service the secondary and residential streets. This particular storm forced the weekend crews to return to the main arterials, hills, bridges, and curbs for safety purposes. This left the secondary and residential streets untouched for an amount of time. Once the mains were stabilized and safe for travel, crews returned to secondary and residential streets, including cul-de-sacs and dead ends. There's approximately 14 hours of cleanup following a heavy extended snow event. We will move to the more detailed cleanup, which incorporates pickup trucks to clear out curbs, cul-de-sacs, intersections, and dead ends."
Sincerely, Monica. Thank you very much. At this point, I need... At this point, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I will move that we adjourn to executive session in accordance with Article 2, Section 6, parentheses 1, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official of the city.
Second?
Your call.
Ms. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Foder?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Donato?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes, thank you.